Twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two school committee meeting. I'm the Chair Elizabeth Spinney and I call the meeting to order. We start with public comment. Any public comment tonight? I guess you can sit in the chairs since we don't have the podium moved over. So just a reminder, you have two minutes. And if anyone else in the audience would like to speak, we'll open the floor for a total of a maximum of fifteen minutes. Please state your name and your address before you begin.
Sure. Greg Julius, forty-four Browns Road, Grafton. I'm here tonight to voice my concern how we're addressing the learning loss created by the closure of schools due to the pandemic. To be clear, I'm not here to make statements about the actual closing of school or the effort made by teachers over the past three years. My concern, my concern lies with the appearance that this has not been an overall priority for this committee. While teachers and staff best equipped to lead these efforts to identify and close these gaps have been made, my concern again lies that this has not been an overarching priority since the return of our students. Instead of pausing new initiatives to focus on permanently closing these gaps, teachers find themselves trying to close these gaps without an overarching plan, clear benchmarks, while at the same time trying to support the needs of their students coming back from the closure of school, the remote plan or the hybrid plan, and in many cases supporting their own professional needs as they've shifted from traditional in-person schooling to remote schooling to a hybrid model, back to in-person learning. Even prior to the pandemic, teachers maintained a balancing act of using assessment to inform their instruction moving forward. And based on, now it appears that they're doing this work in addition to trying to close two years of learning loss. As teachers work to address these gaps in their PLC prep time and planning, they're also being pulled in different directions to implement new curriculum materials, instructional methods, and policies as if the closure and hybrid model never happened. For all the talk about teachers being overwhelmed and stressed, they're being asked to address the past while at the same time moving forward with new initiatives and policies that start with this committee. Using last week's meeting as an example, it still appears that the coordinated effort to address these gaps are hopefully going to be clearly identified and addressed in the future. While I'm very happy to hear that, what does that do for the students like mine and in some cases yours who are currently in the classroom trying to learn new material with areas of weakness in their foundational knowledge? In terms of pacing, how are our students going to meet grade level if these gaps aren't being addressed? And when they are addressed, it's in a sense in a whack-a-mole manner based on what the teacher's seeing in year one or year two. And I know this will sound like I'm picking on math, but again, using math as an example, how do we expect students in higher level courses to be successful if they're not being instructed in the prerequisite content material? And even now, that instruction is happening in a piecemeal fashion. Conversely, the same should be said for those students at all levels. When we're not fully addressing those gaps, as these gaps over time become compounded, at some point, teachers and students may not be able to keep up with the standard, which in turn impacts the next course in the pathway. In a sense, they can get kicked down the road. Looking back over the past two years, there's been little conversation regarding addressing these learning loss by this committee despite it being a well-known fact and result of the pandemic. In some questions, in some cases, the question has been asked if student standards should be lowered or defining grade level should change instead of questions about how to address these gaps to support all of our students and all of our teachers in a systematic and coordinated effort.
Mr. Julius, I've let you go over a little bit of time, so if you wouldn't mind just wrapping up.
Sure.
Thank you.
It is disheartening as a parent to watch your meetings and see more urgency for making sure that the old images of a mascot are removed, no one pushing back on questions about lowering standards or even fact-checking a parent's public comment during your own meeting time. While the show must go on, as a committee, you've missed an opportunity to set addressing that gap as a clear priority from the time the students returned to our schools two years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right. All right, moving on to general business. I believe we have the technology update and fiscal year twenty-four technology budget with Mr. Trahan.
I appreciate the opportunity again this year to present a little update on what's happening in the technology department and provide you with our budget requests for the upcoming fiscal year. As I have in the past, I want to make sure I take the opportunity to introduce and both thank our team. This is the technology department as it existed about two weeks ago. We recently lost John Orin, who's up in the top right corner. He went on to take a position at Summit Academy. And Jesse Delacona joined us recently. So Mr. Orin was our use of facilities and AV coordinator. That role is being taken over by John Sinosk, who is already in our department. He'll be doing use of facilities and systems. John's primary role before taking over use of facilities was Wi-Fi switches, the phone system, setting up desktop computers. He'll continue to do some of that high-level infrastructure work, but also take over the use of facilities from John. Jesse will take on the role of AV technician, making sure that our clear touch panels and our projectors are in working order as well as desktop and computer repair. So that's our team, and I appreciate everything that they do every day. They work hard. Also new this year is Crystal Lebrun. She took over the position of integration specialist, the position that was left vacant by the retirement of Cindy Engwal, who was here for a long, long time. Krista's doing a great job. I think teachers love having her in their classroom. She's very approachable and friendly and very, very knowledgeable with technology Just a quick look back, I looked at my notes from last year. It was almost exactly a year that I was here last. The spring and the summer are a very, very busy time for the technology department, the summer in particular. People think the schools shut down in the summer. We ramp up, so much so that we don't, August is our go month. No vacation days in August, no time off in August. But we start in the, in the spring. MCAS, the computer-based testing, is something that the technology department works very hard on. Actually, we had our planning meeting today with principals to kind of plan out what that's going to look like for the spring, modeling it after years past, making sure that devices are ready. And when students are testing in the building, we are there. There is someone present to handle any tech issues in every building every time someone is testing with MCAS. Once MCAS is over, we start, we start our summer work by prepping devices that are going out to the incoming sixth grade, the incoming ninth grade. We collect eighth-grade Chromebooks. We either collect or sell senior iPads to them. We set up and distribute the ninth-grade iPads. That's ten sessions that we have at the high school. Parents and their students sign up for that. We go over the expectations, provide them with the device, kind of a little overview of how it works. Sixth grade, we do a little bit differently. We do a drive-by at the schools. We set up a little tent and parents and the students can come pick them up at the schools. During the summer, the technology staff update and clean all labs, all offices, the computers and the projectors, document cameras. We go through every Chromebook cart that we have at both North Street and Milbury Street. We roll all of our systems into the new school year, which is a huge task. That's actually one of the things that we plan out kind of the most because one system affects the next system, which affects the next system. So we have all that planned out. We set up accounts and devices for new faculty and staff. This year, Kristin and I kind of went back to something that we had done a few years ago before the pandemic, which is new hire HR sessions where staff can come. We spend three hours with them and she and I walk through logging into every system prior to school starting so that on day one, they are functional. We are human. Errors happen. You forget a password. A name is spelled wrong. All of that is handled well before school starts. And we've, the feedback that we've gotten from those sessions has been extremely, extremely positive that teachers are ready to go on their first day of school. So those new, new hire sessions are great. In my department, we handle all of the state reporting. Mrs. Bressard is our data coordinator. She reports out to the state several different reports. Sims is the student information, student course schedule, our employee information, school safety and discipline report, as well as P E B T, which are benefits for families in need. My department is also in charge of new student registration. We have, our new student registration is online. Most of our students, new students register during that summertime while we have regular enrollment all through the year and certainly kindergarten registration that happens in the winter slash spring. Most of our new students register in, in the summertime. This year, working with Kristin, we developed a new process for our ELL students. So when a family comes to a school and is identified as not speaking English, I get involved right away. We have a meeting with an interpreter and help them through that registration process. That sped up the registration for non-English-speaking families immensely. And then another thing that we start in the summertime, which leads into my next slide, is our student demographic update. We have had a major push in the technology department to increase both the use of the Schoology parent portal, but also the Power School parent portal. Our demographic update for students is done through the Power School parent portal and we've had a good, a good return, increasing return over the years. Last year, we had about fifteen hundred parents do that online. This year, we're up to twenty-three hundred that completed that process completely online. And then while we're talking about Power School, one of the new things that's happening in Power School right now, and you may have seen it on our website, is our special education department is implementing digital signatures for special education documentation. Just a couple of things I want to talk about before I get into the budget numbers. I'm not, I don't have that many slides, but one of the things that we brought back after the pandemic this year was Edge Annuity. Edge Annuity is an online learning platform where students can take self-paced courses. Karen Mealy in our English department managed that for us this summer with summer school. So we had fifteen sections of summer, of classes in summer school. All but one student who actually transferred completed that successfully. And there's a number of reasons that students take those classes in Edge Annuity, for credit recovery or a course that they need to, a different course that they need to take to make additional credits or to make room in their schedule. My daughter in particular took a class to make room for her schedule this year so that she could do something else and have a little bit more fun once school started. It was a lot of work and it was tough, but she did it and now she's able to do something else in her class, so that's great. So that was our summer school. And then this fall, just like we have the QCC classes and other opportunities with VHS, we currently have twenty-three sections of classes running in Edge Annuity. Courses include health, physics, US history, lifetime fitness study skills, financial math, and English. We have one student that's kind of auditing a course and using that course just for extra help, which is great. We pay for the license. It doesn't matter how many kids we have in there, so that's a great use of that, of that free resource. That student works a little bit differently, has free movement through the course. Most of the courses are defined. You have to go step by step, submit module one before you go to module two and so on, so on. He has free movement, can go in and out as needed, doesn't submit any work. That's not part of what he's using it for and then won't earn credit. But great using it as a, as a tutorial and resource because there are some great videos and resources within that, within Edge Annuity. So we brought that back. That was a tool that we used during the pandemic at the high school. You may have noticed on our website that we have a new calendar feature. If you haven't, I think it's great. We reached out to a company called Trumba and they have widgets that we can put on our calendar that feed from Google Calendar. So every school has a Google Calendar as well as the district that we can feed important events on. This is a screenshot from the high school. So here you're looking at the district-wide events and the high school events. But if you go to the district page, you can see all schools fed together. Check, uncheck the schools that you don't want to see. You can subscribe. You can print. You can import. So there's lots of features with that calendar, just one way that we're trying to keep the public up to date on what's happening in all of our, in all of our buildings and us as well. So that's on our website. This year, at both the middle school and the high school, we are trialing, piloting Smart Pass, which is a digital hall pass system. All of our kids at both of those buildings have devices and we're utilizing those devices to have them create and demonstrate or show a hall pass. The hall pass system allows us to kind of keep tabs on where everybody's going. We can limit the number of hall passes to a specific room. So if we only want four kids in one particular bathroom on a particular floor at a given time, whoop, no, you can't, you have to wait until the hall pass is, is out. We can see patterns if we need to, but it's, it's been well-received at the middle school so far. The high school is piloting, piloting it now, but that's something that we'd like to implement for the next, for the next school year as well. I'm sure that you've already heard about the STAR assessment, kind of a lot, from both our reading and our math departments. The STAR assessment impacts the technology department in a significant way, again, because it is computer-based testing. The STAR assessment connects through Clever, which we manage. So our, both our teachers and our students use single sign-on through Clever to access the STAR assessment. We are, we piloted that last year. The technology team was there like they have been with MCAS for the pilot. And we were again there when they, when they implemented in the fall. I think with the STAR assessment, we're going to be able to phase out because it is super, super easy. It's a great tool, very easy to administer, quick thirty-five minutes at max, but that's been great. Coupled with the STAR assessment from Renaissance, the company that, that puts out STAR, is Schoolzilla. This year, we chose to look at Schoolzilla for our data management and to analyze data. Schoolzilla allows us to take the data from STAR, data from Power School already connected, as well as local data, MCAS, Dibels, Fanta and Pennell, other data from the state, access test, testing, and get a complete picture of a student. So as students transition over time, they have a nice history there that we can see, you know, are the assessments impacted by behavior or attendance? What does that trend line look at? And was there an issue at this particular time that maybe we needed to do a dress or look at? So Schoolzilla is our new data tool that is, that it kind of accompanies the STAR assessment. Some projects that we're doing in our network this year, every year, as I, as I map out, as I map out kind of what our network looks like and our infrastructure looks like, we always want to make sure that we're keeping things up to date. We've had some big projects in the past. Last year, we replaced the core switching at our high school, which is really the heart and the brains of our whole network. This year, we have on order our equipment for the central office here downstairs. We have a room downstairs that, that manages the switching for the central office. And we're looking at installing a network at the new location for the eighteen-plus program in, in North Grafton. So that will be a core switch, a firewall, access points, wireless access points for them, the course phones. This is one place we're finding delays with ordering equipment. We're about ten months out for ordering equipment. So all of this was ordered early on, kind of in July, and we're, we're hoping to have it done before the end of the fiscal year, but we're still waiting on, on parts for that. So planning ahead is certainly important for us. The last two slides focus on my budget, on the technology budget. So I break down the, the technology budget into software licensing, which are reoccurring costs every year that, from licensing. There is a significant jump from last year to this year, and that I will talk about in the next one. I think that's more of moving money into different places and tracking it better is what we're trying to do. It's not necessarily a, a jump, so we'll see that. But we have our software and licensing. In our software and licensing line, I, as a, as a matter of, as a rule, I add three percent over the actual cost of the prior year to budget for the, for the year. That, that formula has, has worked out well for me in the past. Sometimes it's less, sometimes it's more based on individual vendors. Our hardware line is still staying relatively the same. Things in that line shift. So where last year I had eighty-five thousand dollars to redo three computer labs, this year that went down, that one item in that line went down to thirty-five for one lab. So items within that line move around a little bit, but that is a little bit less. Miscellaneous, that's keyboards, projector bulbs, telephone handsets, cabling, headphones, mics, you know, all of those kinds of things. Support services includes our phone support, our network support, our telephone service, our internet service, the support renewals for our Wi-Fi, and the agreements that keep our network running on a regular basis. And then we have Technology PD is the last line. That covers conferences that we're going to and any professional development that our tech department needs for new, for new systems that we use. So that's the total budget request. Here are some of the budget influencers. That software line that we talked about, ClearGov, which the town began using, that represents our twenty-four thousand, represents our portion of that. The largest number in my budget this year is our Envision's math program. So last year, I worked with the curriculum department, the math department to align our math licenses. We had licenses for two to five. We added K one. We realigned those that they all expire at the same time. This is a, a six-year agreement that we have with Pearson for Envision. That is payment number two of, of the two payments. So really, that's just moving money from some other line to this line because I track the licensing. So we keep detailed notes in, in my budget on when different items have to be renewed. So that's not an every-year thing. That's, that's a one of two payments over the course of, of a six-year license. Learning A to Z had a significant increase this year. Naviance is a tool that we've used at the, at the high school for a long time, moving that into my budget. Power School Digital Signature is a new item. And then we have the STAR assessment, Schoolzilla, and Smart Pass, which are larger budget influencers for this upcoming school year. Some of the hardware changes, some of the big things that I'd like to do in the next fiscal year relative to hardware, our new core switching at the middle school, South Grafton and North Grafton. When we do our core switching or we talk about our internet or our Wi-Fi, all of that I submit through a federal program called E-Rate, and we get a forty percent reduction on that cost. So that sixty thousand dollars represents our investment in that, in those tools. The federal government, if I do the paperwork properly, reimburses us forty percent. It's like doing taxes all year long because you're working in last year, this year, and then, and then next year. One lab, I'd like to refresh one lab this year. So for this school year, we worked on the Mac lab at the high school, which we've moved kind of into the library space. And we refreshed South Grafton and North Grafton's computer labs. Next year, I want to work on the Tech Ed lab at, at the high school. That would be the lab that we'd refresh there. And then one of the successes that we've had at our elementary buildings at South Grafton and North Grafton are our clear touch panels, moving away from the projectors, the interactive projectors to the, kind of the TV screens. I'm sure that you've all seen them at, at South and North Grafton. I'd like to move that up into the second grade, start with the second grade. So for next year, I'm putting in twenty-one thousand dollars for six panels to start half, three in one building and three in the other. That's not really a new budget item because I typically budget roughly thirty thousand dollars for projector replacement. That's just using that money for that instead. We'll take the projectors that are in those classrooms, put them aside, and use them as replacements as others die. So it's not, that's not new money. That's just shifting the money and purchasing something different. But I wanted to talk about that initiative because I think the teachers in those buildings will be very, very happy with those clear touch panels. And we are starting, we do have some of those on, on mobile carts. So for example, Milbury School, teachers will be able to start kind of playing with that and learning about that clear touch panel prior to the, it being installed in their classroom. And that is my presentation for this evening. Short and sweet. I hope that was okay.
Great. Any questions from the committee? Amy?
Thank you so much.
Yes, you're welcome.
I love that you come in and you give us all this great information. We understand what everything's for because we do get questions at this granular level, like why is my kid logging into this and what is it for? So I appreciate knowing what's happening at the lower levels now that I have a child at the upper level. I had a question about Schoolzilla. It sounds very exciting. It sounds like teachers maybe have access to this or is it just curriculum staff?
No, everyone can have access to Schoolzilla. So the teachers would log into Schoolzilla the exact same way that we log into, into STAR, which, to be honest with you, I, I love that you pointed that out because that is a huge driving factor. One of the things that's very difficult to do when we implement a new system is no new passwords, right? And one of the reasons I, I, I looked at Schoolzilla, as soon as we picked STAR as our platform for assessment, I looked at Schoolzilla right away because it, they marry each other, right? There's, it's very easy to go from one to the other. I can drill down deep into STAR, but then I can back up a little bit and look at a larger picture of that particular student in Schoolzilla and see all of the pieces that are affecting their assessment.
Okay.
Through Schoolzilla.
I, it sounds, it sounds amazing. It sounds very powerful and I just wonder if the, if the, if there's been time for training the teachers to, to know how to use it effectively, like not literally click, but just like how are we going to use it in the district?
So we're not there yet.
Okay.
We're not there yet. We, we finished the implementation of Schoolzilla, took us three months to get all of the data systems connected. We've had admin-level training. Mrs. Gasper was part of that. All of the principals have been part of that. Data coordinators, curriculum coordinators were part of that. We're not at the teacher level yet, but that piece is there.
Okay.
And it was one of the deciding factors in, in moving toward, in that direction.
We've really focused on the STAR reports right now for the teachers so that they can drill down and understand the STAR reports and then we'll move to the Schoolzilla. And that's been a big part of our PD days.
And the difference is that they're looking at their students, their subject, whereas the other system shows them the whole picture.
Right.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
I'll let someone else go. I have more, but.
Any other questions?
Really? It's me again?
That's okay.
Or I could, I could.
Oh, go ahead.
We could take turns.
So you mentioned a student who was using Edge Annuity for pre-calculus help. Is there any opportunity to expand that? Are there, you said there's, we have so many licenses that, are there any opportunities where other students in other subjects who need a little extra help, who may otherwise need a tutor but can't find a tutor, can't afford a tutor, might be able to utilize Edge Annuity for, for other things like that?
Yeah, absolutely. So Edge Annuity is new again as of July, right?
Yeah.
I worked with the, the company to get us set up and ready to go so that we would be ready for summer school this year, but it's new to us again in this, in kind of in this venue as of July. So I'm very happy with what we've done so far. One of the things that I have kept telling both the guidance department and Karen Mealy is let's not bite off more than we can chew, right? And make sure that we know how we're going to interact with the system because there's management that, that has to happen behind that. You know, I mean.
Sure.
Well, it's easy to get students registered and going, there is follow-up that they need and there is support that those students need. So I was concerned about biting off more than we can chew and I've held us back. So I'm happy to see that that's happening, but definitely, yep, we have no limit to the number of students that can log into. We have a building-wide license, so there's no limit to the number of courses and students that can be in that system, but we still need to manage and support them.
Sure.
Through that process.
Understood, yeah. Good to know there's potential though, that's good.
Do you want to volley back and forth?
Sure. I'd like to talk.
After Amy.
Okay. What? Oh, I would like to ask you about labs because some of the, I've been thinking a lot about, you know, the fact that we have one-to-one down to grade five now. And I'm wondering, are we moving to the point where we're going to like not have labs anymore and teach the kids on their own devices in a different room or at the elementary level specifically? But also I know that the labs at the high school and the middle school have not been very well-used. There simply isn't opportunity in the day for many of them to do that. And I wonder what the value is there that you see?
So are labs at North Street, Milbury Street, and the middle school, with the exception of the library at the middle school, have classes that run in them on a regular basis? I've had regular conversation with Mrs. Miller and Mrs. Lewis about what the future of that looks like and how we might move away from that. We're doing more with coding. They, they love doing technology lessons on robotics. They, they, they're always looking to do, they do stop animation with iPads. So we do get away from the, the labs a little bit. There are still things that they do in their lab, but we are having regular conversations about that. Certainly the lab that we're doing at, in the Tech Ed lab and, and our new Tech Ed teacher, I went and visited her a couple of weeks ago and I actually came back and talked to Dr. Cummings and Kristin, Mrs. Gasper about what she's doing in her classroom. It's the first time we've had a Tech Ed teacher take the, the architecture and the tech engineering off of the PCs and put it on the iPads. That's the first time that that's happened. They've relied on the software that's run on those labs for a long time. But it is important, I think, for our kids to learn to be device-agnostic. So while I'm not, while I'm in favor of limiting how many labs we have, I like the fact that students who come to Grafton learn how to use a Chromebook, they learn how to use an iPad, they learn how to use a PC, and they learn how to use a Mac computer. And one of the reasons we've never switched from the PCs at Milbury Street and North Street, we've never made those Macs or made the lab at the, at the middle school PCs. They switch. They switch over. So we, kids get the flavor for all of that. And how you operate one is a little bit different. We want them to make, we want them to be able to jump from one platform to the other, but we are constantly having those conversations.
Great.
About, is this important? Is this something that we should do? Should it look, should it look different? Should it look different for us in the future?
Great. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks. Thank you, Neil. One thing that I'm always struck when you visit us is how incorporated tech is within our curriculum and what a part, a partnership you are. When we're looking at your budget, a lot of that is part of our curriculum. And what I really like is how you gave us a big overview on the data that we're seeing. So really, you can track students, and you can see how they've been over the year, and we can look and take an in-depth look on how they've fared over the years. And I think that's really important, and obviously, it's a huge priority for the district to really look at what the kids are learning and how they're learning and how we can help them. So thank you for your part of it. I really, I just, I really appreciate your partnership. I mean, it's just, it's not just, I've said this before, but it's not just technology. It is, it's an intricate part of our school district and what we do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
I'm all set.
All right. I have a couple more quick questions. One of the things that I've been thinking about a lot lately is around cybersecurity and, in particular, cyber insurance. And, you know, I'm seeing all these, all these places where student personal data is, is provided, and SchoolZilla, and SchoolG, and Power School. And I don't know if this is a question for you, maybe, maybe it's more a question for Dr. Cummings, but I, I don't have a great handle on what our situation is with cyber insurance and the cybersecurity measures that we have in place to protect all of this personal data. But obviously, it's, you know, it's a growing issue, and I wondered if you had any.
So I, I'm constantly reading on, about security in our, in our systems. We try to make sure that our, all of our vendors take security of information that we provide seriously. We try to make sure that we, we adhere to any requirements they put forward relative to, relative to usernames, passwords, those things. Cyber insurance is, is not something that I'm up to speed on. That's typically handled by the town. We definitely would have, have to look at that. I've seen that come up in my listservs quite a bit recently because a lot of, a lot of the schools are talking about two-factor authentication for, for cybersecurity and so forth. One of the things that I am most, that I try to make sure that we keep up on is the equipment that we have, making sure that the patches are up to date, that our firewall is up to date, that we can't be, that we can't be hacked in, in the school. We, we have had in the past DDoS attacks where, you know, someone will try to attack our network and shut us down. We pay for service through our internet provider to take care of that. We have an agreement, we have an agreement with a company called Hubtech that manages our infrastructure and our network, including our firewall and our access points, to make sure that if we ever had an issue, first of all, number one, prevent an issue, but if we had an issue, we had the support, the services, and the resources to get back up and running on, you know, very, very quickly. But we do make sure, we do make sure on a regular basis that any vendor that we're using takes that, takes that seriously.
Okay. That was another question was what the, what kind of diligence do we go through to assess what security measures are, are the vendors putting in place?
It's making sure that we read the fine print.
Yeah.
And they're not selling student data, that they're not, they're not offering it off to a third-party company, that they have requirements in place, that they have measures in place on their end, on their servers or wherever they're being hosted.
Okay. Great. And, and one more question about the, the vendors, too. I think you may have answered it. I just want to make sure that I, I heard you correctly. It sounds like when, when it comes to software licensing, do we have, or do you have a general approach with that in terms of the length of the licenses? You know, that longer licenses, you can get better rates, but then we might get stuck in a contract where, you know, maybe we decide after a couple of years, we're not so happy with it, or we've moved on, or the next greatest thing has come out. So do you, do you have a sort of a general approach to that? And, yeah.
I do. So I'm in favor typically of the one-year license.
One year.
In, in most, in most cases. In some situations, you don't have the choice. It's not always a choice. And, but in those situations where we do have a choice and they offer us a discount, believe me, I negotiate for the, for the best price. I spend a lot of time going back and forth with vendors about the, the negotiation. But let's take, for example, Invisions. We already had Invisions, two to five. We knew we wanted it for K one. That is a license that they renew for six years. We're not going to implement a curriculum program, provide teachers with all this training and support for a one-year license. So having that six-year license makes sense. The other area, we're talking about security, we use Sophos antivirus on all of our desktop computers and our, and our laptops. That's another place where, once I evaluate what antivirus we're going to use, that's another place where a three-year license makes sense. As long as we're keeping up to date, there's no reason to change. Typically, that, that discussion is driven by whatever company is supporting us. So we have a network engineer that comes from Hubtech, and that's one of the applications that they're very comfortable and familiar with. So that's someplace where, again, I would do a three-year license. But most of our licenses, even Power School, is a one-year contract, a year-to-year, a year-to-year contract. And inside those contracts, we talk about the rate at which those increases will happen. So for example, a couple of years ago, we, we purchased a replacement for our foreign language lab, and they didn't have in their contract any language that limited how much they could, they, they would increase. I made sure that we had that, we had that language so that we weren't going to be hit with, you know, $1,000 this year. That's great. It's easy to get into, and then next year, it's $2,500, right? You know? So it does vary.
Yeah.
A little bit, but for the most part, it's a one-year license.
I think that makes perfect sense, yeah. I'm with you. I'm a fan of, in most cases, the one-year license.
Yes.
Because, because things do change.
Things do change, yeah. And we want to be, we want the freedom, yeah. However, I will tell you, I've never had an issue of, I'll give, an example is Power School. So we had a data analytical tool from Power School that I was not happy with. Not only did we get out of that license within the year, but we got a complete refund for that. It, it wasn't working for us. And we'll go after that money if, if it's not working for us.
Any final questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Great to see you. Great information. Thank you for all you do. Okay, so we're going to skip the fiscal year '24 budget, move it to next meeting, probably?
Definitely the 14th.
We're going to try, we're going to try it again.
Yesterday, we finally got that, that core line document produced from, basically with ClearGov. And once that's set, all the other ClearGov pieces go off of that. So it's a, it's a rough draft. We're spending the day tomorrow working on it. Once we have that, one way or the other, we're presenting on the 14th. I can't take it anymore.
Sounds like it's been a lot.
13th is torture.
The next, the next meeting.
I thought it was the 14th. Is it the 13th?
It's the 13th. According to this.
Oh, that Tuesday. I will be here.
Excellent.
Okay. So that leads right into our next topic, future agenda schedule planning. So we'll move that discussion to the next meeting. Anything else that we need to add?
I was going to.
Or change, delete?
I was going to ask if, if the budget hearing, being January 10th, is realistic at this point. There's so much we're not going to know.
We could certainly push it back.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
To the 24th?
Evan tomorrow, I'm guessing he's going to push the whole, they're dealing with the same. We have many more lines, but the same issue with Vadar. So I know they're delayed as well. So in a general sense, I'm going to ask if we can push it out of two to four weeks and, I, I'm not expecting any pushback.
Will we still, will we need to keep a conversation about the budget?
Oh, yeah.
On the 10th? And then, and then have the hearing and maybe another conversation on the 24th?
Right.
I feel like that's about when we had it last year, anyway.
It is, yeah.
And we were fine. Okay.
Can I bring two topics?
Yeah, sure.
DECA, the business.
Yes.
Club reached out and they asked if they could present at the next meeting.
Okay.
An overview on their own. I was impressed. I told them I would check with the committee. And whenever the committee's ready, I have a draft of the calendar for initial consideration ready to go.
Oh, great. Okay.
That was on my, that was on my list.
How soon, so he's got it ready. How soon do we, I mean, sooner, better, right?
We'll do it next week.
You sent it out to us, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You sent it.
I remember.
You did. You sent it out.
You did.
It doesn't look.
So we could do it on the 13th, too?
Yep. The initial, and then approve it after the holidays, put it out in January.
People will love that.
Yeah. That'll be no excuses, right? Be on the website for almost nine whole months before school starts.
Yeah. It's gonna be awesome. Everyone can plan those vacations. Yes, thank you.
I didn't see anything in my initial review, but we'll take a look, another look.
Always catch something.
Talk about it next time. Anything, anything else on the calendar?
The only thing that, the only other thing that I noticed was that it's a student-faculty council meeting a couple of times, and it should be student advisory. I think that's a little confusing.
Oh, yeah.
Like, three times.
Just a typo.
But the rest of it looks fine.
So any objections to having DECA come next meeting, too?
Oh, no. Neither of them.
I mean, I'm just in terms of schedule and.
No, it'd be nice.
Okay, great.
They could bring us presents.
So will you let the?
Yep.
You already have pens, guys.
There's no requirement for presents. Will you let them? No, no, okay. Thank you.
Those are $150.
All right. Minutes. Jay, do you want to give an update on our minutes situation?
Yes, so just to bring you back, Bethany moved, left us, is in Ohio. We had hired someone. They did, I think, one full set of minutes and kind of ghosted us and disappeared. We've obviously cut ties with her. We posted and as of yesterday, hired somebody.
Oh, that's great.
So as, unless we hear otherwise, I'm going to ask her to do these minutes, and then, if possible, I'm going to ask her to help us catch up with the, the two meetings in between.
Can you share with us who, who it is?
Jessica doesn't live in Grafton.
Mm-hmm.
Give me a second. Jessica is her first name. That much I know.
So she'll be full remote as well?
Yes.
Yeah, and just watch the videos?
I'll have to look for it.
Okay, that's okay.
Great.
All right, well, great. Thank you for doing that again.
My pleasure.
All right. Financial port warrant. I'll look for a motion to approve, we have three warrants tonight, so we'll take these each, one at a time. Look for a motion to approve the November 10th, 2022 warrant in the amount of $546,706.30.
So, so moved.
I have a, I'm sorry. I have a different amount.
I think she's looking at two different items.
Five, $456,706.30.
Yeah. You said 500.
You said the next one.
No, I didn't. I, I just transpose numbers. So I look for, well, anyone can make a motion, a different amount. Looking for a motion to approve the November 10th, 2022 warrant in the amount of US $556,706.30. Why are you still looking confused?
Because you said 500,000, I guess.
Did I still say that again? 456.
6,000.
Just make the motion however you want, then. Do it right.
I've moved to approve a warrant.
I can't get it right.
I moved to approve a warrant dating 11/10/2022, and then we don't have to say the number. There we go.
Okay.
I got that. Now we need a second.
Second. I kept transposing that.
There we go.
All those in favor? Hi. Okay. All right. I'll try to get the next one right. I'm looking for a motion to approve the November 23rd, 2022 warrant, the one ending in W21R in the amount of $1,727.92.
So moved.
Yep.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Or, all right, thank you. And a motion to approve the November 23rd, 2022 warrant, one ending in W21, in the amount of 566, I'm just making sure I got that right, 566,377.62. I didn't get that right?
337.
Three, what is wrong with my?
So moved.
Yeah.
Yep.
And 62 cents.
Yep.
Okay.
So moved.
Amy? Second?
Second.
Okay, I heard a second. All right. Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. We don't have any policy tonight?
Can I just add?
Yeah.
I can't hear her last name. I'm not sure how to say it.
Okay.
Pugere, maybe? P-G-E-R-E.
All right, thank you. Anything you want to say about policy?
Ooh.
Do you have anything to say? No, okay. No, okay, any member reports?
I went to the Puff's a couple of weeks ago, was it, was it, was it last week? Last week.
Was it last week?
Yeah.
Well, last weekend was Thanksgiving, so weekend before that, right?
Yep.
It was awesome, it was great.
Yep.
Don't follow Harry Potter, but
Oh, man.
But the kids were awesome.
You don't follow, follow Harry Potter, so you, yeah. So the references?
No, but I thought the kids were awesome.
They did a great job. Hard show.
Any other?
I have another.
Yep.
I went to Puff's, but I went as a mom, so I don't count that school committee thing. But I did go to see Mrs. Miranda's class. It was the highlight of my week. What I was super impressed about was the students who were amazing and just remarkable and so smart and so kind. How they were learning was just so cool, she gave them, they were learning about water, and the water shortage across the country. And they were learning with art and literature and math and science. So a whole kind of way to learn different, different things. So one of the students, can't remember the book, which I've read, reached out to the author of the book. And during the day, they were gonna Skype with the author, who were, I don't know if they were gonna Skype with them. He was gonna be video conferenced in. And so the the student on his own did that. Then they were drawing haikus and making this like giant haikus, so they were learning poetry. Then I went to the science lab where they took samples of water from Lake Ripple. And we looked at what was in it and we compared Lake Ripple to regular drinking water. And I was just so delighted to come. She has an open door, would love to see anybody if you couldn't make it that day. And she's also looking for volunteers to come in and read or work with the students in math. And it's not necessarily a high level, she told me when I grimaced at the math, but so anyway, reach out to her if anybody at home is interested in volunteering in the schools. But it was, it was such a great day, I know Kristen was there as well, and a bunch of other people came in while I was there, which was cool. So thank you for the invitation, if you're watching, Mrs. Miranda.
Can I mention a few things? I should have done a superintendent report, but our cheer team. Kristen and I had the chance to go over and watch them perform in Shrewsbury, maybe three weeks ago, maybe two weeks ago, they went to the States and they came in third in Central Mass. Did a great job. The football team, as you probably know, is going to the Super Bowl this Friday at eight o'clock at Gillette. And just as a follow up, at the last meeting, we had discussed renting for for large groups. I went to our largest renters right before Thanksgiving, met with them in person, had great conversations. I think we've got a good understanding going forward and we are gonna open up to large scale rentals on a limited basis this spring. So we're gonna try that and then I'll report back.
Great, thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
And that was it.
I wanted to kind of tag on what Jay said about the football team, the pep band is gonna go with them. Not with them, cause that would be weird, but they're taking a bus and they're gonna go, the other team is not bringing a band. And the cheerleaders are going as well, so it's an all hands on deck
Yeah.
situation. I wish I could go so badly. I know there's gonna be a live stream, but you're gonna have to pay for it. But I hope everybody in town is supporting all of our students going to a very strange and huge place. It's, it's like going to the big game, right, the big time. They have no idea what what to expect. I didn't know if we were doing our MAS C conference reports tonight, if we're gonna wait on that, cause we all went to the conference and
Anything, yeah.
Okay.
Feel free.
Sure, well, I had a great time at the conference, I went to a lot of sessions that were a little bit out of my I won't say comfort zone, but just the usual stuff. I went to a session on the shared services approach to anti racist practices. A group of school districts in Massachusetts that share a DEI coordinator. And it was fascinating to hear, it's not all sunshine and rainbows. But it's interesting to see it, different districts are at different places, right? But they share one staff member. And if you get the right person, it can make all the difference. And it was just, I have tons of notes that I, half of which I can't read. But it was just really exciting, I wrote down all the names and the districts and everything, so I can provide a summary of that. I went to a session on the school committee role in financial oversight, which was frightfully boring, but very important. Basically, we're doing all the things right that we should be doing. And all three of us ended up by chance at the the nursing and medication session, which was extremely eye opening. All of the, all of the laws and things around nursing that just, I mean, hats off to the nurses all the time, right? But the fact that they have to deal with some of these super arcane laws that make no sense at all. Super frustrating. And it made me appreciate a little bit more what they have to deal with. And the fact that apparently school nurses hate field trips was kind of key for me, I thought they liked it. Get to go out and do something fun, but apparently some of them don't like that. I went to a session about leading and governing schools during an emotionally and politically challenging era. That was, I took some notes that I can't read. But it was, it was nice to be in a room full of people who understood, we're all together and we've all been through this, this trauma together. And school committees have never been more isolated and yet more under attack. And it's been very difficult. And my last session that I went to that I took notes on was about open meeting law and public comment. And basically, it comes down to, we were elected to use our judgment. That was what I wrote down, there were some other things, but we use our judgment. And at the end of the day, as long as we're using our best judgment, that's what we're elected to do, so. It was great to talk to some folks I'd met before the pandemic at the conference and kind of touch base with them and see how things are going. And it was, I can't recommend going to this conference enough, I know Leora's gonna watch this eventually, I hope she can go next year. It's a great experience, even if you can only go for one day, do a couple of sessions and just connect with people. And of course, I saw plenty of these too. So it was good.
Laura, did you have anything to add?
I'll just piggyback quickly. Yeah, I mean, it's always a great conference, I think, thank you, you know, for those who were able to go, you know, it takes time out of our, I take time off of work and so it's nice that MAS C really gives us a a chance to grow professionally as school committee members. I went to, I also went to the nurses' policy, cause that's on our policy deck coming up soon, so it was great to go and listen. Different perspectives, as Amy said, I went to also a diversity, a different, actually former school committee member, Maureen Dr. Cohen, was presenting with the Douglas superintendent, so they were talking about their experience with DEI. Which was really nice because they're in Central Mass too, and it's a different world than when we go to a Cambridge session on DEI. And so they were talking about how, you know, baby steps, like it's not all a switch that, you know, when in Mendenupton, they don't call it DEI, because they know that that's gonna kind of put people off, so they change it and they think about their audience. And I think that's important for us, especially me, sometimes to keep in mind, you have to remember your audience, that people need time to get used to these changes and that's okay, and we need to obviously keep an eye on our students, but also understand that this is, could be difficult decisions for people. So it was nice to hear their perspective and it's always good. I got reelected to Division Four Secretary, so I went to the Division Four meeting and got to network with some people. And yeah, it was great, I went to some other ones, I didn't bring my notes, but I always take away like kind of one nugget, you know, from each thing, kind of like Amy did. I think the best part is really just connecting with people and spent a lot of time with Mendenupton's chair. And a member of the Douglas School Committee, and it's, it's nice to be able to share best practices and problems together. You know, nobody's go, we're all going through the same things, like, we're not unique in our issues, so. It was good.
This is my first time attending and I was able to go for a couple of days, not quite as long as everyone else, I had to get back for some other things. But it, I thought it was great, I learned a lot. And some of the, you know, the the question regarding cybersecurity that was brought up during a dinner with other school committee members and principals one of the nights, so, and it was something that I thought, oh, yeah, you know, we really should be talking about that. So I thought, you know, it raised a lot of issues just in hearing other people talk about things to other things to, you know, put on my list of things to look at and and think about. Two of the most interesting sessions that I went to, besides the delegation assembly, which was fun, we had six resolutions that we voted on, and of course, the one that we promoted as Grafton School Committee members, along with a few other districts, was, I think, the most controversial, it was a little, it was surprising, but we had some nice debate and I was able to like call up my lawyerly experience and and make a few arguments in there to get that passed, well, along with some other people, but it was, it was fun, I had fun kind of turning that on, I don't get to use that outside of work very often, so. Speaking of lawyers, I also went to a session on the court, the school committee and then the courts, or schools in the courts, which was really interesting. A lot of cases regarding the crossover between bullying, for example, and First Amendment rights. Religion in the schools. There was a case about a rogue school committee member, which obviously we don't, you know, we don't have to worry about that, but it was interesting. What do you do with someone who's speaking, you know, representing the school committee and not, you know, in a proper way? How do you, how do you deal with that? What are your, what are your rights? What are your, what's your ability to do something about that? So there were really interesting cases, I took obviously a lot of notes on those cases, which I won't bore everyone with. But then I went to a session on policy, which I thought was interesting because it it kind of reaffirmed, I think we're doing things really well on the policy committee. Some of the tips that he was giving, I was sort of sitting in the back of the room, just nodding, like, yeah, okay, yeah, we're already doing that. So that felt pretty good and he asked, at one point, asked for some ideas about, you know, how are people doing this? And and I think the the way we were approaching it was spot on, so that was nice. Yeah, so I had a good time and look forward to it, hopefully I'll be able to go next year.
I, first of all, I I have to say, I'm so grateful that you were our representative
Oh, thanks.
At the delegate caucus, because I feel like you were probably the best person to go in there. I I wasn't expecting it to be, you know, I wasn't expecting it to take a long, long time. So that, the length of time was fine, but the amount and the type of dissent, I think you were the best person to handle it. And I'm glad you were representing us. I did want to follow up with one thing. The session I went to about open meeting law, there is a decision coming down from the Supreme Court. The barren decision is coming in twenty, fiscal year twenty three. And all school districts are gonna need to look at their public comment and open meeting policies again. I did make a note of that. MAS C had put forth an amicus brief about that decision, so we're now just waiting. And I'm sure we'll hear directly and then policy can do their policying. But hopefully we're okay, I don't anticipate it's gonna be huge, but we could be, you know, surprised.
It was interesting, we talked about that actually in the the schools and the courts discussion a little bit and asked, kind of, they asked around the room to see how people were handling public comment sessions. It was interesting, a lot of people just don't allow it at all.
Yeah.
Or people will, will ask people to sign in, or they'll restrict it a lot more than we do, so.
I wonder, did we go to the same session but different times?
I think they ran it twice.
Yeah, cause I, we had that same, we did a show of hands, who requires a sign in, I know we did at some point, cause I signed in years ago. But we got away from that and it's not in the policy, I don't know what that does for you, I, some districts even have people sign up in advance. Which, I don't know, I think we could have a discussion about that another day, but it was interesting to me
Interesting to hear what people were doing.
That there's no public comment sometimes, and I was like, oh, wow, I didn't think you could do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, you can.
You know, we say that all the time, it's not a public hearing.
Yeah, it's our meeting.
We have to be in public.
Yeah.
But, you know, you, we wanna be, be able to listen to people who come in and get their opportunity, so.
Sure.
Right.
You know, I think it depends, and it's up to the public on how they abuse it too, and then you can choose it, you know, like the Quaker had to.
Yeah.
I did attend Community Reading Day as well this term. I always love it so much, I always ask for the first grade classes, cause usually I know a couple of those kids and they're just, oh my gosh, they're so adorable. I read Stella Luna, which was my son's favorite book when he was in second grade. But they loved it and they were so cute. And when I was explaining, I try, you know, you try to think, how do I explain what I do as a school committee member to first graders? So I was sort of rehearsing before I went in there, I was practicing, and I thought, okay, I think this sounds pretty good. But then I was giving the explanation and the question that came up right away, little girl put her hand up and she said, looked at me strangely and said, what is education? And I thought, oh, I said, well, it's learning, everything, you know, I explained it, but I thought, oh, you know, dummy, me, I've used, used that, you know, big word, but anyways, cute, so next time. Edit, edit that down, but
You know, you don't get some a laugh is if you tell them you're Jay's boss, cause somehow they all know Jay. So Dr. Cummings, well, I'm one of his bosses, they think that's hilarious.
They were, they were very clear, I was happy to be there.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Okay, don't have any correspondence to talk about, we do have a need for executive session tonight.
Laura, you wanna take this?
Sure, I move that we go into executive session for the limited purpose under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty Eight, Section Twenty One. To comply with or act under the authority of the Public Records Law, the personnel file exemption, the Massachusetts Privacy Statute, Mass General Law, C two fourteen, Section One B, and the Massachusetts Student Records Regulations, six oh three, CMR twenty three. We will only go back into regular session for the purpose of adjournment.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Oh, we have roll call, sorry. Graciela.
Aye.
Amy Marr.
Aye.
Laura Alton.
Aye.
Elizabeth Spenny, aye. That's four, all right, so we will end this meeting tonight, good night, Grafton.